Okay, we'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's board meeting. First, we'll start out with the call of order and roll call.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, there we go. Thank you, Chairman. First, I'd like to start off with the call of order and roll call for the Russell County Board of Supervisors June 29, 2025 at 6:00 PM at the regular board meeting room. Andrew Hensley.
Here.
Leanne Wallace.
Here.
Tara Dye.
Here.
Steve Breeding.
Here.
Rebecca Dye.
Here.
And Nate Kaiser.
Here.
And David Eaton.
Here.
Sir, you have a call. Okay, if everybody would stand for the invocation and then the pledge, please.
Let us pray. Father God, Lord, we love you, we thank you, and we praise you today, Father. Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for all the many blessings you have given us, and we thank you for allowing us to come together and be a part of our local government, Father. Forgive us for where we fail you each and every day, lead, guide, and direct us in everything that we do, for it's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody had a chance to look at the agenda, and I think Ms. Wallace wanted to amend the agenda?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I would like to ask the board if we could amend the agenda to move item number seven, which is the presentation for Ms. Lily Ruth Mayberry. If we could move it on further up, possibly right before the public hearing or wherever Mr. Lester thinks it should go, right in there?
I'll second that motion.
Yes, how about we move it above the public hearing?
Perfect. Thank you so much. You got a motion and a second, Mr. Chair?
Yes, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all so much. So, I guess, well, I'll turn it over to Ms. Wallace.
Okay, come on. All right, very good, thank you. It's a pleasure tonight to be able to present this, and we've already done one so far out of Sawmill Holler in big old Dainte, Virginia, and we've got another one. So they're growing them well up there, let me tell you. And so tonight, it's my pleasure to do a proclamation on behalf of the Board of Supervisors for Ms. Lily Ruth Mayberry, and she is here tonight, and she was going to come up here, and we're going to get our picture made. Everybody in the Mayberry family and beyond is coming, right? All right, so I'm going to read it to you. Whereas, the Russell County Board of Supervisors wishes to formally acknowledge Ms. Lily Ruth Mayberry, a distinguished and longtime resident of Dainte, Virginia, for her exemplary life and profound contributions to our community. We hold in high regard the good character and citizenship of our residents, and Ms. Mayberry serves as an exceptional illustration of those qualities. And whereas, Ms. Lily Ruth Mayberry, a longtime resident of Russell County, born in Wilder, Virginia, Ms. Mayberry moved to Sawmill Holler at the age of four and has resided there ever since. Her home, originally a three-room dwelling, has been thoughtfully expanded over the years by her late husband, James H. Mayberry, a testament to their endearing legacy within the community. This expansion, which added eight rooms, reflects the growth of her family of seven children and embodies the spirit of resilience and resourcefulness characteristic of Russell County residents. And whereas, Ms. Lily Ruth Mayberry, known to many as Ms. Mayberry, Mom, Mama, Nana, and Grandma, is a woman of remarkable strength and can-do spirit despite her little petite frame. A dedicated member and ardent supporter of the Dainte Lives On Community Board, her devoted faith earned her the esteemed title of Mother of the Church at First Mount Cavery Baptist in Dainte. Her legacy lives on in the hearts and memories of all who know her and her kindness and in her endearing faith. She is a true matriarch, a steadfast pillar of her community and her family. And whereas, the Board of Supervisors welcomes this momentous occasion to celebrate the prestigious centenary birthday of Ms. Lily Ruth Mayberry, reaching a major milestone in her life at the wonderful age of 100 years old. And now, therefore be it resolved, the Russell County Board of Supervisors does proclaim May 1, 2025, as the first annual Lily Ruth Mayberry Day in Russell County, Virginia, and we all invite every resident to observe this, and I wish you all the best of luck to attain a wonderful age like Lily Ruth Mayberry. Ms. Mayberry, I love you, honey. Come on up here. Richard, there. All right, everything I just read on there is all about you. Turn around and let everybody see you. Can she hold that, Patty? Come on, Leanne. Roy, come on now. You better get in. You better get in here. You did make it, didn't you?
I would like to say thank you to Ms. Luann and to the Board of Supervisors here at Russell County. May God continue to bless you, you, and all the citizens of Russell County. Love you all.
Well, after that, can I get a motion to adjourn? I mean, what a blessing, what a blessing. God has truly blessed that family, no doubt. Don't we all hope and pray that we can live that kind of life and have the kind of faith that she has? That's amazing. Thank you, Lou, for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, okay, now we're going to go into the public hearing. I'll turn that over to county administrator.
Thank you, Chairman. First on the public hearing is the Russell County DSS FY 2025-26 one-time salary bonus. This is a bonus that is being approved by the General Assembly Appropriation Act of 2025-26 for the Russell County DSS Department of Social Services full-time employees. This is a one-time bonus that's authorized for all full-time Russell County DSS employees in an amount of 1.5% of the employee's annual salary that will be funded by the Virginia General Assembly Appropriation Act in the FY 2025, FY 26 biennium under chapter 725. This is an approval for, I need approval after the public hearing for this ordinance. Does anybody want to speak on behalf of the DSS? Is anyone here? It was just on the agenda as far as, you know, the formality of it in the public hearing. If no one wants to speak on the DSS one-time bonus, then we'll proceed to the public hearing for the Russell County Countywide Financial Budget, FY 25 and 26. Does anyone want to speak on behalf of the budget?
Yes, this is a public hearing. Yes, sir.
Everyone, Mark Manning, I live here in Lebanon. All the praise and glory to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I just wanted to share something with the board because I'm not sure that some things were made clear. As you know, I was a constitutional officer over in Washington County. The comp board paid 80% of my salary. The 20% of it and the insurance was paid by the county. My employees, my chief deputy, he got 50% of his salary paid by the comp board. Then the other employees, I had about five in the office, that were listed as state employees. But the comp board only paid the county a fourth of their salary. So I just thought you should know that. Now, when a raise comes down from the state, if the state's covering the raise, then it's state-funded, that's it. But if a raise comes down, they partially fund it, then it's up to you. It's not guaranteed. You should know that any money comes out of your budget, you all have to approve it. And I just wanted you all to understand, when they say state employee, that it's not, it's not completely a state employee. They'll tell one of my employees they're paying 8,000, and I don't know if any of you's dealt with the comp board. When they say they're paying you 8,000, they're giving you four. Just like on their mileage, they'll tell me to go to the meeting, they're paying me 24 cents a mile. Well, they pay me 12 cents a mile. So I just want you to understand that just about every single employee that's under the constitutional offices are paid for by you. The state's not funding very much of it at all. Like I said, I was the commissioner of revenue, and they were only paying 80% of my salary. So I just wanted you all to be aware of that. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else? Like to speak?
On behalf of the budget? If not, we'll proceed on to the Russell County School Board property transfer to the county, which is 218 Memorial Drive property. This is a public hearing for the transfer of this property from the school board to the Board of Supervisors. Does anyone want to speak on behalf of this issue? If there is none, then we'll go ahead and close out all three public hearings concerning the Russell County DSS one-time salary bonus, the Russell County Wide Financial Budget FY 2025-26, and the Russell County Property Transfer to the County of 218 Memorial Drive property. The public hearing is closed. Before we proceed on to the rest of the agenda, Chairman, we will need an approval for the Russell County DSS FY 25-26 one-time salary bonus, as you see in your packet. The, as y'all see in there, it is a 1.5% that's paid by the state. We do have a small portion that we got to supplement this for of $42,299.35 that is our local match requirement for this raise, and this will take care of all the full-time employees at the Russell County DSS. It's a bonus one time, I'm sorry. One-time bonus of 1.5% of their salary as effective June 2025. So I need approval on it.
Okay, do we have a motion on the floor to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dye.
Second.
Okay, I got multiple seconds. Any discussion?
I got a little bit of discussion. That, almost $4,300, that's in their budget presently, right? I just wanted to make the public aware because that's what I was told outside the meeting, so.
That is correct, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And they well deserve that, or am more. And the next one on the line is the Russell County Wide Financial Budget. Is that, any action need to be taken on that?
I'm used to the different, we're in different rooms. This is the Russell County County Ministerial Presentation on the Russell County Budget. As, let me pull it up here and bring it up on the big board. So, at the last budget meeting, we passed the real estate tax rate. We, this one is these numbers that have been added to the FY 25-26 Countywide Budget. As required by code, we will have to reconvene after two weeks to approve the final budget. When you go through, take a look at these new numbers that were put up on the agenda today, and we should be able to go through it. But one, some of the highlights that I was wanting to mention is the Russell County 2025, you see, education is 31.5% of the budget. The health and welfare is 5.2. General services, 4%, public safety is 24.9. Environmental is 8.1. Judicial administration is 10.2. General administration is 7.8, I think. I apologize if you can't see. Others is, which is the parking wrecks and the community development and capital outlay and debt reserve. So that makes up the total of budget as is presented right now. Please take a review at it and take a look at everything, including everything that y'all want approved for the FY 25 and 26, so. And we will reconvene at the board's discretion later on the date.
Well, let's go ahead and set the date. I've got the 24th, it's on a Tuesday. That'd give us enough time to be able to, be able to publish this and meet back or reconvene on the 24th, if that's suitable with everybody. Okay, is everybody fine with the date?
That works for me.
All right, thank you all. Will, need a motion to reconvene? Okay, I'll need a motion to reconvene on the 24th. You want to do it at the end of the meeting?
That's fine, sir.
Okay. Make sure we don't forget that. Okay, the Russell County School Board Property Transfer to the County at 218 Memorial Drive.
I need approval on it. Yes, sir.
Motion to accept the property from the school board.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Thank you, Mr. Hensley. Any discussion?
Where do we stand on sale of this property, Mr. Lester?
Mr. Hensley, where, the school board is in the process of the closing, but under the Code of Virginia, this has to come before, you know, be all property has, before the sale, has to be transferred to the governing board. This is part of the process before they can proceed for the closing.
So it'll be this board actually selling the property, not the school?
That is correct.
Who gets the funding?
That's up to the governing board.
Well, I will tell you this, I had a discussion with Dr. Hooker, and they have filed a request to put new heating and cooling units on the middle school at Lebanon with this money. And they wanted the board to take that under consideration, to use that in funding to put in the new heating and cooling units at the middle school.
That's at the discretion of the Board of Supervisors, but for tonight, I need a motion to go ahead and transfer to be able to do the sale.
Yeah, we're still in discussion.
I'm, apologize.
But I just wanted to, I just wanted to give them the insight on what they're looking at doing with the money. So we're still in discussion. Anybody else have any discussion in regards to that? Before we may proceed. Okay, I do have a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you all. Okay, on presentations, I turn it over to the county administrator.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, on the presentations, as far as the budget is, take a look at it and go through each one of the numbers and the new changes that the governing board wants to see in the FY 25-26 budget. And send me any of the changes that you need. And apparently, we'll, the interim date right now, before it's set, is June 24th at 6:00 PM to reconvene to approve the final tax rates and the final budget for FY 25 and 26. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't see in there anything for the forensic audit.
The, as far as the forensic audit is concerned, I've got the contract ready to go. I figured since it's under the new budget, starting July 1, we're finishing out June till June 30th, it'll be on the July 1 board agenda, the July agenda.
Take out the contract.
Yes, sir. And make the decision of the terms and conditions. Any other questions?
Is, here we go. Is the PSA litter or trash money they collect, is that in this budget?
No, sir. No, it's not. And if you, if you give it the pleasure of the board, I'd like to do, we, we knew that this was one of the concerns that's in the community right now in the PSA. So if you give me a few more minutes to, let me explain to you the history of it and show you what we've got. When... I'll put it in. In 2006, Russell County Board of Supervisors did an ordinance as... In 2006, Russell County Board of Supervisors did an ordinance as the businesses were starting to grow in Russell County, North of Grumman was coming in, CGI, Walmarts and the rest. We seen an uptick into the disposal cost. There was a large amount of, you know, disposal that was coming through in businesses. So, effective July the 1st, 2006, the governing board decided to implement this ordinance per, you know, the Code of Virginia, which is still a valid code, to offset some of the costs that the county was going to have to incur. Now, on this list is either commercial, retail, manufacturing, industrial, that were businesses that were in the county and within the jurisdictions of the towns. Now, the ordinance was set in, so the, again, the taxpayers, Russell County citizens, were not taking the burden of collecting the trash for Walmart, or Taco Bell, or McDonald's, or Burger King, or Taco Bell, or any other business in Russell County. Now, until, per this ordinance, every year, those funds would come back to the county to the general funds that would help offset the general funds cost, taxpayers' funds. As we transitioned to the consolidation of the, the PSAs, and the PSAs have a contractual, an agreement, which the PSA is a legal component of the governing board, same way the IDA is. Well, they were collecting this fee for us, and they get a 5% fee for doing it. So, each year, that money would come back to the general fund until the consolidation of the Castlewood Water and Sewer and Russell County PSA. Now, when we started the consolidation of it, neither the old Castlewood Water and Sewer, nor did the new Russell County Water and Sewer have enough funds on balance for Virginia Resource Authority or RND. Now, what does that mean? We, at the time of the transfer, and this is off the top of my head, they had about $212,000 that were in this account. So, what the governing board decided to do was use that funds to be able to, as you see up here on the screen, on all of these lines right here to the side, was all of the loans that were in existing Russell County, the Board of Supervisors, and the Castlewood Water and Sewer, all of these accounts here. As we consolidated them, if we couldn't have come up with a reserve fund, which is required by VRA and RND, and it is the Bond Councils or McGuire and Woods, which is one of the biggest bond councils in the state of Virginia, VRA is the biggest lender in the state of Virginia, they needed assurance from the governing board, which they, again, the PSA is a legal component of the governing board. To be able to get 0% interest on these loans, so you've got to remember, all of these loans right here to the far left were consolidated and restructured and refinanced, either at 0% or 2.75%. Now, the loans on the right-hand side is what, we took all of these loans into these loans. These lines items right here and refinanced, $16 million. By giving a reserve, guaranteeing the reserve until the PSA could get its feet back financially, on its own feet, and start replenishing that account, that reserve had to stay in place to guarantee, as you like, you pay points on a mortgage on a house, or guarantee collateral, the governing board was doing this. So, as you can see, out of 16 million, this was guaranteeing those 0% loans, which saved the county millions and millions of dollars in interest costs across 20 to 30 years, and the consolidation. Now, as of today, and I got, I knew this question was going to come up, right now, they have $484,698.06 in this account, that's at the governing boards. Now, when they start replenishing these accounts, and they get to that maximum reserve account hole, which is about $705,000 for both RND and VRA, which is in the agreements, which is in the Russell County audits, that they will start returning that funds back to us, and that will start going back into the general funds. They're contributing, on an average, of $7,000 to $10,000 out of their revenue each and every month, back into this account until they get it built up, back up on their own. Now, what the governing board could have done was just let the PSA and the new consolidation go out and take a loan. Well, that would be, been defeating what you just did, as trying to get 0% to go borrow money on money that you're borrowing. So, what they did, they kept that reserve in place, and as Russell County PSA gets up to the 705, starts accumulating, it will start coming back to the general fund. Now, I know there's been some issue with, there's supposed to be a contract between the Russell County Board of Supervisors and the PSA. Now, the PSA is a component of the BOSS. Now, if they were a municipality, then they would require that contract. It says may, not shall. It's up to the discretion of the governing board. I've had the attorneys look at it, remember, the Bond Council for McGuire and Woods, the biggest bond council in the state of Virginia, has looked at it, VRA's looked at it, and RND. Now, one of the things that assurances that they put in to the Russell County PSA, as you can see, after, off the Russell County PSA annual report of June the 30th, 2024, they mentioned this account, and they do keep it as is. Restricted assets, as you see up here on the screen. It says, "The authority is required to maintain the debt reserves in an amount of $254,676 in rural development and $450,000 for Virginia Resource Authority. The authority maintains two deposit accounts and two certificate deposits to cover these requirements. The authority maintains a cash account on the environmental waste account, which is what it is, collected on behalf of the county. These funds are transferred at, to the county when requested. We control that account. It's ours to sit there until that reserves be, back up. If they have to go out, borrow the money, we'd still be doing the same thing, because they, we are the governing board, we would have to give a moral obligation, same way the IDA, if they had to go borrow the money to put as collateral against the funds." So, again, as of June 30th, 2024, the county authorized the authority to maintain these funds of $414,273 in the, in the debt reserve. See Note 3A. As you go to 3A, it gives a breakdown of what restricted debt service is, again, restricted only to debt, and what deposits are in the Russell County PSA. As of June 30th, 2024, the authority has maintained environmental waste account for the county in an amount of $414,276, all of which the county has authorized the authority to utilize for debt reserve. The authority also reclassified $166,530 of their own operating funds to the debt reserves adjournment, so they're replenishing it too. See, we're both building back up until we reach that cap of 705, and it will start returning back to the county budget to be able to offset, not only, and this is not under the new code, but it goes back to the general fund. So, we track this every year. If we had a contract, if we did have a contract in place, the only thing that we would be doing, as far as a transaction analysis is, we would go to the PSA on June 30th and say, write us a check for, we collect about approximately $75,000 a year. That's one. So that tells you how long it's, we've had to take this to build up. It would write us a check for $75,000 that year. We would turn around, take it to the treasurer, and turn around and write a check back to the PSA. That would be it. But the PSA is a component. When we file our financials, the school board, the IDAs, and the PSAs are a legal, legal component, and attorney's sitting here, he can tell me if I'm wrong, component of the governing board. So, we're getting there, they're getting there, they're getting their feet on the ground, they're getting close, as you can see, we got 414, they've got 166, and now that was the last year, so this has got another $75,000 in it, which accumulates up to $484, plus the PSA is probably at 73, a little over $200,000 on their own. So when we reach that capacity of 705, we will start bringing it back into us. Now, that's it. Again, guys, that disposal ordinance was set in place when we started growing, North of Grumman, CGI, Walmart, Taco Bell, I can show you the accounts. You don't want to pay for these people's trash. It shouldn't be fair that Russell County citizens are taken up, because what happens? Those come in in commercial containers, or they are brought to the transfer station, Russell County, and that includes the towns, has to pay, Russell County citizens has to pay for that disposal and tipping fees that goes to Blountville. It would not have been fair. The businesses can write that off as an expenditure, a cost of doing business. That's where it should lay, not on the backs of the Russell County citizens. That's it.
Well, thank you.
I know these are long, but government is not simple. There are so many tie-ins, so many agreements, so much history, that you've got to explain all of it. If you want us to write a contract, we'll write a contract. I'll do one transaction, and it'll be done.
Thank you, Lonzo, appreciate it. All right, moving on, public comment? Okay, we got Sandy Hess.
Well, Sandy Hess, Swords Creek. First, I'd like to say thank you to the board for approving our bonus at DSS. I work with a lot of really hard-working people that really deserved it, and we do thank you. I'd like to especially thank Tara Di, she's an excellent board member, advocating for the, the workers and employees, and it's just our whole agency, and we appreciate it. We're definitely not used to it. Which brings me to why I am speaking tonight. Not to represent DSS or anything to do with it, this is personal. My comments tonight are directed specifically to Ms. Rebecca Di. During the meeting last month, the idea of discontinuing the RACE program was brought up. My 16-year-old son, Adam, was opposed. He and Ms. Di had a couple of exchanges back and forth from the audience. He should not have been asking you anything in that manner. Of course, you should not have been engaging him also. But during the break, he was discussing the matter further with Mr. Eaton. I was home watching the meeting on YouTube while taking care of my father. I heard this exchange in real time that was caught on Hot Mic. I was appalled that you, a sitting board member, former educator, and alleged adult, would respond to my teenager in the condescending, dismissive manner that you did. He simply asked you a question respectfully. I've taught him to be respectful, but bold. He simply wanted to know what your problem was with the RACE program. The fact that our young people are interested enough to come to meetings, get involved in the matters of this county is rare, and it should be encouraged. You could have taken that opportunity to educate him on the reasons you're not in favor of the program. I have some issues with the program myself. But instead, you mockingly stated that when he lives in your district, that you would talk to him about it, and laughed at him. I would like to inform you that you vote on matters for the entire county, not just your district. You are a collective part of a governing body that is supposed to have the best interest for the entire county at heart. Now, we have continued to treat you with respect, and we will, because politics is one thing, human decency is another, and you owe my son an apology.
Okay, next one up, Oris Christian from Lebanon.
Thank you, board, for the opportunity to speak for you. I had two things I want to speak about taxes. One thing, our storage up here, they like $100 doubling the assessed value of that property. I asked the person we went before, I said, what about the depreciation? We don't use depreciation no more. We use what it would take to replace that at today's price of material. I said, that's another way of taking money from a taxpayer. I didn't get no answer. But I think it's ridiculous. All my real estate, I own several pieces of real estate in Russell County, real, residential and commercial, but that one was outrageous. I'm not saying this hoping that they raised the other, because about eight or 10 years ago, they doubled the assessed value of every piece of property I had then, but they didn't do that this time for that one. So I think that they need to be some adjustment. We're going to meet Wednesday and talk to them again. And the next one is this thing of public comment time. I have been attending these meetings, most of them, since 92, and we didn't have a question and answer session. I've asked a question, and they tell me, no, public comment, you, we are not going to answer your question. But the last meeting, it kind of got out of hand, looked to me like. I left 15 minutes to eight, and there was a lot of people talking more than three minutes, 10, 15 minutes maybe. And they were, they were answering, asking questions, and they were getting answers. You can't have it both ways.
Listen, okay, no comment from the public. No, no comment, this is, you heard me. You heard me.
Well, they told, they said years ago, and I agree, that if y'all answered the public, you can't get in a hot situation, back and forth, and that's what happened to last meeting, see? It got out of hand. So let's get, decide whether we're going to have just public comment or question and answer thing. I think we better go back to just public comment time. Thank you.
Dave Miller.
Thank you all very much for allowing me to speak here just tonight. Have a lot of landowners and business owners had questions about the trash issue and about the PSA. What's interesting to me is in 2023, when the PSA was improperly disconnected people's water, and you can go back to the July 2023 minutes, their attorney told them that their process was improper, and they did that over 2,000 times. I approached many members of this board. They said, we are, they are a separate entity, we do not govern them, they are not attached to us. If you look at the 2024 agreement, or 2021 agreement, they are a separate state corporation, and there's contractual agreements between them and the county. They are not, respectfully disagree with Mr. Lester, because that's not what you all told me. You all told me, they are a separate body, we cannot do anything with them. And they improperly disconnected over 2,000 people, and they haven't made no move to pay any of those people back. So I'm going to move on to the next thing. The money that the PSA collected on behalf of the county is not $75,000, but $105,777.76, that's for one year, that came from the PSA. When these questions came up, I asked for the documents that Mr. Lester was talking about, and this is, and he had it on the board, the 2026, or 2006 ordinance. We all agree that this is the 2006 ordinance. A little background about what I do and what I've did, I've managed contracts for over 30 years, close to it. I was a director of land and contracts for a, two publicly traded companies, and my job, part of my job was, I'm not trying to sound boastful, but when they went to court, they called me and said, you need to review all these documents, because you're going to be deposed. I've sat in, in rooms with three lawyers throwing questions at me and dissecting agreements. So, we all agree that this is the contract. Collection. Russell County may either collect the fees itself or enter into a contractual agreement. There's two choices. You may either collect it yourself or enter into a contractual agreement. That's the options. If you don't collect it yourself, you have to enter into a contractual agreement. The maximum that can be kept, and we want a strong PSA, I want a strong PSA, I just want things to be done in the right order and in transparency. The maximum they could keep is 5%. I know Mr. Lester said there was, the governing body made a decision, where are the meetings? Where's the contract? What is the, where is it at? Because I asked for it in both the PSA Because I asked for it in both the PSA and the county said the documents don't exist. I can go read Mr. Lester's comments on the 5%. He said the document does not exist.
Got about eight seconds there.
Okay. All right. Mr. Lester's comment to me back was, and I have this in writing.
That's time, I'm sorry.
Okay. I think you might ought to get an attorney to look at those, at this contract, because it's not May, and May can't be moved around. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Mark Matney.
Hey, how's it going? Oris already spoke about, one thing I wanted to talk about was the three-minute rule. It was completely ignored, and I didn't think you guys were supposed to be talking to us. And the other thing, I haven't heard yet anybody try to make an apology to, Daniel Mead wasn't even here, and they were people talking about him. I think he just, you know, I think somebody needs to apologize to him. And I think they definitely need to apologize to Randy. The redneck comment, I think, was thrown out to him. So I think somebody owes him an apology. And the last thing was, I don't know legally how important approval of the agenda is, but the chairman made a motion to move that up the agenda. There was never a motion to approve the agenda. So I don't know how important that is, but I just thought I'd mention it to you.
Randy Burke.
Phillip Burke, Lebanon, Virginia. I've got something I want to, I've been advised for her to read the, um.
So the First Amendment principles of public comment periods. Perhaps the most fundamental of all First Amendment free speech principles is that individuals have a free speech right to criticize the government. The U.S. Supreme Court explained this core democratic principle in New York Times versus Sullivan, writing of our profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and that it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials. Second, the First Amendment prohibits government officials from silencing speakers based on their point of view. This is called viewpoint discrimination in First Amendment law. When the government discriminates against viewpoints, it is distorting the marketplace of ideas and impeding free trade in ideas by allowing the expression of some ideas but not others. Sometimes, government officials camouflage viewpoint discrimination by contending they are simply protecting the public from offensive or disruptive speech. But as the U.S. Supreme Court made clear, giving offensive, offense is a viewpoint. The court elaborated on this point two years later, explaining that the judgment of whether speech is immoral, scandalous, or otherwise offensive distinguishes between two opposed sets of ideas. Otherwise offensive distinguishes between two opposed set of ideas, those aligned with conventional moral standards and those hostile to them, those inducing societal nods of approval, and those provoking offense and condemnation.
Mr. Watson, would you step back instead of her and hand out each one of these, and I'll go a copy of that? I don't want to go close to them. I love the redneck remark. I am a redneck. Shirts are available if you want one. It's awful funny. Little got it twice. I think his name's Mr. Little. He got it twice. 15 minutes first time and about five the second time. It's all about who you are when you stand here and whether or not you get referred back to you, just like he says. They come back and forth to who they want to. But the rest of us, you know, it don't matter. We don't care because I'm a bully and I'm a redneck and I'm proud of it. Shirts are available if anybody wants them.
Okay, that's the end of the sign-up sheet. Yeah.
I'm going to say on the same note as Sandy. I'm just going to say I was really appalled. I have gone back and watched this meeting, I'll bet, seven or eight times. I have been embarrassed by a lot of the ways this meeting went last month. Totally embarrassed by the way a lot of the people acted, not just, I'm not going to just say it wasn't the crowd, nevertheless. At the landfill meetings, I watched the F-bomb get dropped 100 times, and nothing was ever said. I was embarrassed by that, but nobody said a word. None of y'all stopped that. I watched clapping. I watched carrying on by some of y'all. Ms. Lester, I watched you. Your secretary shouldn't even be showing a viewpoint, but it was very much shown. David? The way you spoke to Tara Di last month, I'd be ashamed. Speaking to a female board member on that board with you that way, that was embarrassing. I walked out of there ashamed. And I don't know if you've talked to her about that or not, but I think you should. I think an apology was owed. So I don't know where y'all stand on this, and I think, I think a lot of comments need to be made across the board to everybody. But I, as a Christian, was really embarrassed about a lot of things that were said that night. And I think everybody should be. I was embarrassed for this county, the way it was represented. And you know what? A lot of people watched that meeting because if you go back and you look at the views, this county was represented really ugly that night. So I don't know what y'all think of that, but I was embarrassed to say I was from Russell County that night. Ashamed. So I hope y'all look at that, because I was ashamed. That's my three minutes.
Okay, anybody else? If not, we'll move on. New business. Approval of the minutes, consider approval of the minutes of the following meeting of the Russell County Board of Supervisors.
I'll make a motion to approve these minutes, but I've got one little issue that I want you to.
I'll give you a second.
Okay, thank you. On the, the first vote that we took on the budget, it says, it says motion failed. It's when David and I voted for the motion, and I think Andrew voted against it, but I. Rebecca, Tara, Nathan, and Andrew voted against it. And I only heard Andrew vote against it. And all I'm, I'm saying is that if you go back, just go back and look at the, at the video and just clear that. I'm okay with it other than, you know, just make sure that's right.
So you want the attorney to review that?
I don't care. Lonzo look at it. I don't care. All I'm saying is, I heard two yes votes and one no vote, and I didn't see any of the rest of them, so. I did hear Lou did abstain, but the others, I don't know. So just, just get the count right, is all I'm saying.
Mr. Brigant, are you referring to the proposed tax rate presentation, the motion made by you and then seconded by David?
Yeah, that first motion.
On the tax rate for 57? Okay, that first motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's one David gave up.
Myself and that county attorney will take a look at it.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, that's all I've got.
I can assure you, I voted against it.
Yeah, same. One thing that I'd like to point out, Zach Stute's name is spelled wrong in the constitutional officer reports and requests. Constitutional officers' reports and requests. It's Z-A-C-H-O-R-Y, and it should be, it should be Z-A-C-K-A-R-Y. But to be fair, Zachary is spelled a bunch of different ways.
I'll call the vote.
Okay. To approve the minutes based on the clarification of the board members and the way that they voted on that, is that, is that, is that right? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Okay, the unapproved minutes of May the 5th, is that same one? Okay, sorry. Approval of expenditures, consider approval of expenditures presented for payment, pay the bills.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion, and I don't know if I can say this or not, but are we on target for the budget? So let me just make a motion to approve the budget or the financials for this month, and I'll need a second. Okay, thank you, Andrew.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Now for discussion.
Are we on target for the budget?
End of year.
End of, oh, you're talking about the end of the year?
End of year.
Well, of course, you know, you had things throughout the year that you added, you know, the SBAs for the fire departments, you know, everything. Those had to be picked up in addition to, you know, some of the things that and projects that y'all wanted done and completed. So those will be added in. The budget closes on June 30th by Code of Virginia, and those accruals will be moved in, you know, into the July, you know, numbers. So far, right now, tentatively, and looking at them over the weekends, of course, I want to be aware of this, is us delaying the tax rate slowed down our revenue. So right now, our cash flow is, is very thin line as far as collection because we delayed the collection, we delayed the, the real estate tax for almost two weeks, so. What I'm trying to get to is say it's close. It's close. So, and I'll have a clearer picture for you on the 24th.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Okay, now we'll go on down to committee appointments for board consideration. The first one we have is Russell County PSA Board. We have two guys that serves on the board currently, and so I want to offer those, those two positions up if anybody has any other recommendations or wants to reappoint these, these two.
Excuse me, I think this one, it's written into the, there are articles in it that each supervisor has on the point on this.
That's in their charter.
This, this is really the only one we have exactly like this.
Right.
And I, and I think Clifford was District 3.
Yeah.
And Steve was District 4.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to go ahead and reappoint Clifford Hess, please, to the PSA Board.
Thank you, Ms. Di. Do we have a second or any other nominations?
You don't need a second.
Okay, I don't need a second. And I can't, as chairman, I don't need.
On your behalf, I'll appoint, make a motion to appoint Steve Perkins, if that's your.
Thank you, yes, yes, he's doing an excellent job. So we have Clifford Hess and Steve Perkins. Any other nominations or do you want to? Okay, all right, we're good? All right, thank you, Tara. Okay, now we'll call for the vote on both of these. All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Thank you all so much. The Southwest Virginia Community College Advisory Board, Dr. Kim Hooker's back up for reappointment. I would highly recommend that we leave her on there, but it's up to the discretion of the board to do that, but.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Ms. Hooker. I think she was filling out a term if somebody resigned, right? Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'll give you a second.
Dr. Brown, right.
Thank you all. Anybody else have any other appointments? If not, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Constitutional officer reports and request? Seeing none? Okay, I'm moving right along here. County attorney reports and request? Mr. Attorney? Thank you, sir. Okay, now we'll go down to county administrator reports and request.
Thank you, Chairman. First one on the county administrator reports is the, actually, the board supervisors had throughout the budget meetings and the real estate assessment, they wanted to look at, review the, the Russell County ordinance for the real estate tax exemption for the elderly and disabled. I put it into the packet. I have highlighted the sections that for consideration, of course, you can change, you know, most of it is done by the Code of Virginia and the terminology. But what has been looked at, the three most important components is, of course, the total combined income received and the net combined financial worth, and then the rate. Those are the three most important components of this that sits through the, you know, the ordinance. Right now, you have the total combined income of $30,000. You have the combined, combined financial worth of $80,000, and that also includes not exceeding 10 acres. And right now, you have a rate of amount of exemption of $165. So those three things for consideration. Income, the total net worth, and the rate. Now, by the code, this is an ordinance, so I'll have to, I'll have to be advertised the same way as the budget. It'll be simultaneously dual, and y'all can make a decision at the 24th if that's the date y'all decide. So the hardest part, your basis of your net, your network.
When were these numbers generated? When this ordinance was passed, when was that originally?
That ordinance was originally passed in, it was 2000, 2000? Yeah, two, yeah, it was 2016? No, it was 14. It's 2011.
It's before then.
11, 2011.
Before then, yeah.
I apologize, I went ahead and wrote it.
It's 10 years old.
Yes, it's.
At least.
At least.
Yes.
Those numbers probably need to change then.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go right ahead.
I, I do know that I have spoken with Mr. Randy Williams and with Ms. Alicia McLaughlin. They are both in support of us changing these numbers and helping our citizens. They, they are both, say it will be fine. They will, it'll be good, and I think we need to move on with it, Lonzo. I think we need to get this settled and have it ready for our folks. So, but both of those offices are, are ready to work with us.
Do you have any numbers?
I mean, I'm, I'm fine to move that money up to, you know, $250 or more exempt, and, you know, I've got several things that I think we could do.
Ms. Di, I spoke with Alicia, it was probably a month and a half ago, it was before our last meeting, and she suggested to raise the gross income to 40K and the net worth to 100K. And she said we could leave the amount of exemption or we could up it, yeah. So that's, but I think, I think it's a good idea to discuss it with her and discuss it amongst each other, for sure. But you're right, they are definitely in support of that, yeah.
So we need to discuss.
And see, there's a, and we've discussed this from many variables. Now, when the commercial revenue and the treasurer recommended this, I looked at the bases, both the income and the net worth, and then fluctuated the 165 to 200, 250, 300, and looked at who was on the rolls that are receiving the exemption, looked at the population base that would be eligible for the exemptions, and did that calculation at 2, 250, and 300. Now, that's if you don't change the base. Now, if you go back and change the base, I can, you know, I can change those numbers, but, you know, it's up to the decision of, of the board. I mean, right now, if they're receiving 165 and this. I mean, right now, if they're already receiving one sixty-five and this makes sense. Okay, if you go to two fifty or three hundred, the only thing you're making up is from the sixty-five, one sixty-five to the two fifty on that current population that's exempted. So that's the only impact. And I took the total eligibility of everyone that would do it and eligibility of both the veterans and the elderly and looked at the maximum impact on it too. So you're looking at about sixty thousand dollars, that's your total impact if everyone, and some of them will not qualify because of those base limits on income or residential. I don't know if that helps or hurts, but I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to give you as much information as possible.
So, so if we say, let's just say we raise it to forty thousand dollars and a hundred thousand dollars and then move it up to the number that Rebecca said, two fifty, that's what we would advertise in?
That, that is correct.
But, but that could change at the, at the board meeting, at the public hearing.
Yes.
Okay, can you, can you take a look at it with those numbers and give us the report back?
I, I can, I can give y'all a report next time that you can, uh, change the base the same way I did the tax base. You know, let me show you exactly where you're gonna go and what's going, who's gonna impact. But, uh, now this has nothing to do with the numbers. Now, it does and it don't. The thirty thousand income, as everyone knows, most of them here that is retired and draws social security, you're not capping out on thirty thousand. I mean, most of the people, population are not. So, um, I'm keeping the widowers in mind or the singles, that's, that's where I deep dived into. Who is the maximum impact, who could we help? Because not only from the taxes that, that they would be saving, but it's to help with AEP and, and pharmacy. So this, I'm not trying to get to the two fifty, I'm trying to get a little bit more help, is that, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion to that effect?
Need a, I need a motion to publicize it for, for notice.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Uh, any other discussion?
Could you, could you look at it with those numbers, forty thousand, a hundred thousand and two fifty?
I'll give you.
Maybe even three hundred, two fifty and three hundred.
See what the maximum impact is. Okay? Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you all.
Next on the county ministry reports is, of course, the road reporting system. Take a look at that, that, I think there was only one that was on Sox Road. Next is the VDOT monthly road report. Uh, of course, there is two resolutions that is in our action reports later in the meeting. Please take a look at the maintenance activities that were completed. Uh, this is the busy time for VDOT, you know, they're doing a lot of paving and, and of course, road repairing overlay and, uh, on your routes, take a look and, uh, see if they're in your ears. If you have any questions, give us a call or, you know, uh, or we could get with VDOT. Next is the county administrator projects and the PSA listing that Ms. Di had asked for these and, and this is good because it keeps my staff, you know, where we're at and what we're doing. As completed projects, right now, we're currently working on the, uh, we just completed out the Commonwealth Attorney's, uh, offices and Cleveland Community Center, that's being completed, uh, by the way. And, uh, we actually was down there, uh, just, uh, today. Of course, y'all gotta remember too, and this has brought it to my mind, there's a primary going on June the eighteenth, so remember that. So we were just trying to get ready for that. Of course, the Sheriff's nine-one-one offices, Project Lighting is being completed. Right now, we got in progress, we got the Corps Services Division that's in the old, old courthouse with, which was not part of the construction project of the new or the old that we're trying to remodel an office for them. And of course, Luanne's got the Castlewood and, and Andrew has the Castlewood Community Center. We've been getting quotes on that roof, it's hard to get contractors right now. Uh, I've got the library, I seen her earlier, she must have left. We are having to upgrade the bathrooms there. They have the old little ones, I don't know, I think they got them out of the elementary school because they're, they're really, really small. I don't know how long they been there either, but I got the, uh, of course, we, we got a couple of HVAC units on the government center that's gotta be ordered and rescheduled and replaced this year. And of course, we've updated the canary, so everybody's ready for canning season, so we're ready to go. And on the PSA, uh, I'm not gonna go through all these, I go through the big ones, the Bell Face Phase Three, the generators they're working on, uh, the Tiller Trailer Park and the sewer line at Milton's Bottom. Stray Hollow, uh, and of course, the, uh, Nastis Ford and the Dank to St. Paul sewer lines. Next is the Russell County Volunteer Fire Department Service Ordinances, that is still in the hands of the Fire Association. They're doing their last tweaks on the ordinance, the, it's, it's, uh, terms and conditions that they wanted included. And hopefully we'll have that by the July Board. Next is, on the county administrator request is the community center fire and department generators. These were the community center generators and I have these right here. We had two contractors, it'd be Stinson's and Chad Newberry Construction. Based off the two bids for Stinson Heating and Cooling System for a total for the, uh, thirteen generators was a total of two hundred and twenty-four thousand. The proposed from Chad Newberry Construction was two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred. So this is a invitation for bid, which means the lowest bidder. Uh, I need permission to, for the county administrator to work with the Stinson Company for two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to install all these emergency generators in the fire departments and, uh, community centers for emergencies, basically during our floods and fires.
Does these bids fall within your budget?
That's what I was getting ready to say. Now, this is one of those things that we went after a grant from Wells Springs. This is one hundred percent funded by the Wells Springs Foundation, so no county paid.
So it's fully funded?
Fully funded.
Okay.
Two hundred and twenty-four thousand, yes ma'am, I need a motion for two hundred and twenty-four thousand to the Stinson, uh, Heating and Cooling.
Well, I'll make a motion, we accept the bid for two hundred and twenty-four thousand from Heating, Stinson's Heating and Air.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, thank you all. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
I'll abstain.
Was that a good price?
I'm in, I'm in that business, so.
Thank you, Nate.
I will stay out of it. Even though we didn't put a bid on it, I'll stay out of it.
If you don't care, Mr. Lester, give us a timeline on when they're gonna start and where they're gonna start and.
I will do.
I mean, I, I do think the fire departments probably should take priority. Um, but if we could scatter a spot around the county to start off with, if, if Stinson's is willing to do that.
Yes. I will, I will get you a schedule, absolutely. Next on the county administrator reports, the BOS proclamation, uh, is, we moved that up and I already presented that to Ms. Mayberry. And next on the county administrator request is, of course, the VDOT resolution to abandon eight oh six from the secondary systems of state highways. Per the request, I need a motion for the abandonment of Route eight oh six.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. And we got a second, Ms. Di, any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you all.
The next on the county administrator reports, of course, is another VDOT resolution. This is the temporary road closure of Sundown Drive and temporary road closure of crossover at the intersection of Route Alternate US 58 and Sundown Drive. I need a motion, uh, and approval for this.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Any other discussion?
Uh, yes, uh, just so you know, that's in my district and that is in a critical place down there in the cut going to St. Paul. But this is not supposed to start until twenty twenty-seven. So the public will have plenty enough time to prepare themselves of how they're gonna get in and out of there instead of sundown. So anyway, just so we let everybody know.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, and a follow-up on that is that there will be public notices on it and Facebook and everybody that's coming, yes. Yes. Next on the county ministerial reports is.
Wait a minute, we need a vote. All in favor?
We're moving fast.
Any opposed?
I apologize.
Thank you.
Next on the county ministry reports is, of course, the solid waste vehicle surplus and sale. This is one of the ones that we have on our, uh, turnover every, every thirty, thirty-six months. This is the sale one and while we bring in the other, which is a good program. I need approval for the surplus and sale.
Some move.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Di. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you all.
The last item on the county ministry request is, uh, the travel request for the Russell County Commissioner Revenue Commissioner Certification Classes, uh, at TND, at the, um, at, let's see, when is it? It is the, uh, July the ninth, eighth and ninth. I need approval for the travel request.
Some move.
Okay, thank you all.
Is, is that on last year's budget or the next fiscal year?
That, we've already paid, as you see the order confirmation, we've already.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, we've already paid, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussions? All in favor? Any opposed?
That concludes county ministry reports and requests.
Now we'll go board discussion and reminders, Mr. Hensley?
I'm good, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley, Ms. Wallace?
Uh, no, I have none, but I just wanna thank the board for, uh, considering, uh, Ms. Lily tonight. I, I appreciate that, I thought that was a lovely proclamation, thank you again.
Ms. Di? Two guys, sorry.
Too many guys. Um, yeah, I just wanted to, um, give everybody a quick update on Isaiah House. Um, the building is coming along great. Um, Bush Builders are doing a fantastic job, it's really, really, um, it's looking great. Um, we will have the lemonade stand, um, weekend, it's gonna be July eighteenth through the twentieth. Um, this is a really, really great way to raise money. Um, so even if you're not gonna do a stand, please find somebody in town that week. I know the Lemonade Gang, which I'm a part of, we will be doing ours, will be set up out at Cedar Realty. And, um, so come and, and give us some money. Um, it goes to, it goes to a great cause.
You don't even have to drink lemonade, just give them money.
I mean, I don't care if you get the lemonade or not, just come give us money. It's a wonderful cause, um, it is gonna help, um, our community so, so much. And above all, pray for Isaiah House. Pray for our DSS workers, they see a lot, they deal with a lot, um, they very much, um, deserve this bonus. Um, and please pray for the children in foster care that we have, we do have a lot. If you're interested in becoming a foster parent, please, please come see me, come see DSS, we, we will get you all where you need to be. Okay, so, thank you. Um, that would be July eighteenth through the twentieth, it's a weekend, once again, Lemonade Gang.
And if you want, if you're.
Out there at Cedar Realty.
If you're interested in doing a stand.
Absolutely.
Get ahold of Tara.
Yeah, get, get ahold of me, Acacia Nelly, um, at Facebook, we've got a Facebook, so, um, there'll be plenty of details.
Thank you, Tara.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
We'll have another meeting before the Lemonade Day, so we can be prepared to donate also. Okay, thank you.
And that would be awesome.
I challenge, I challenge those in the audience and those listening to make a donation.
Thank you, Lou.
Okay, uh, Steve?
Uh, nothing of a business nature, but I do wanna ask. My wife is going to have to have some surgery here, probably within the next couple of months, or a couple of weeks. About three years ago, she had an aneurysm, it was right in her front part of her forehead there. And, uh, they, she went down to Duke and they fixed it and they put a coil in it. And they monitor her pretty closely over every year. She's got that, first two years was like six months, this third year, it was like a full year. So, uh, we went back and they found a little bit of leakage. So we went back the following week and they did an additional test and they found that they confirmed that it was some leakage. So the alternative now is to try to do nothing, which is not an alternative, replace the coil, which is three years later, you might end up having to do it again. Or to go ahead and have the surgery that where they've actually opened her up and they clipped the veins and removed the aneurysm. So I think she's decided that that's what she wants to have done, we're gonna talk to the doctor tomorrow. But I ask, could you just keep her in your prayers, please?
Thank you, Steve.
We have another board member that needs our prayers too. And we, he and I know who we're talking about, so I won't say it publicly, but we, we need to remember him also. As far as myself, nope, don't have anything to say tonight.
Mr. Kaiser?
Um, I would like the attorney to look into the PSA contract, um, and see what we need to do to get that remedied. If it is a issue, we need to make sure we're on right page. And that goes back to the PSA ordinance. We need to make sure the language that we're operating under is correct. So if that means we need to, uh, amend the ordinance, we need to do so, but we need to make sure we're following our own ordinances. And then I think we also need to consider, um, I saw in the, uh, newspaper about the Pa-, I think it's called PATH Program?
Southwest Virginia PATH.
Southwest Virginia PATH, and this is a program that's, uh, that is very similar to the RACE program. And it basically funds pretty much any kid that wants to go to a community college, a hundred percent. And, um, so because that exists, we really need to consider, do we need the RACE program to continue? Not that it's a bad thing, but if we've already got redundancy, see, I mean, how much, how much do we spend every year on RACE program right now?
Quite a bit. I've got, uh, rough top of head, I mean, I can pull it, uh, I apologize, I kicked it in. Uh, you're looking at one forty, one fifty right now by itself, plus a ninety that you require by law.
Right, yeah, we've got a certain amount we have to give to Southwest, which I understand. But, you know, I mean, I'm all for kids going to school, getting education, especially locally at our community colleges. But, you know, if that's some burden we can take off the county that someone's already fulfilling, we just need to make sure we're getting those kids into that program that needed. And also there's a lot of financial aid and other things that a lot of our kids qualify for, which, um, you know, I feel like maybe, I don't know this for a fact, but I feel like maybe we're utilizing the RACE program more than we're utilizing things that they could qualify for. So there's, there's a lot of money out there for, for you to go to school, so if you get out of high school, you can, you can at least get two years of school, there's a way. So, um, I think we need to look into that and see if that's still a viable program. Um, I know something that Peanut worked on getting in place and at the time was absolutely definitely needed, but maybe now someone stepped into that void and we can take it off the county and I think that'd be a great thing.
I think we need to look at all options.
Absolutely.
Uh, when I started that program, one of the biggest things I heard, Mr. Kaiser, was, uh, people were leaving. Uh, the kids was getting education, leaving the area and we was, had the ability to keep them here for additional two years. And a lot of working families that work, um, didn't get the same resources as people that actually could get financial aid or some of the other types of funding, uh, and it was pretty expensive for these kids. And I know the colleges worked around different programs to be able to take those additional funds and help them to pay for their books. And now they're doing housing and, and doing a lot of other things with that. But if there's any other programs like the PATH program, I know a lot of. But if there's any other programs like the PATH Program, I know a lot of community colleges now have, have picked this up, and a lot of counties are doing the same thing that Russell County started doing, basically to keep our kids here and keep them in a position of work or education. And I, I think it's really worked out good, we've had a lot of completion, a lot of valedictorians, soliditorians, and a lot of people are going to Southwest now that would have probably went on to a higher, higher ed school that would have costed the parents nineteen thousands of dollars, and we're able to keep them here.
Apart, apart, one of the requirements, Nate, is that they're required to fill out all the Fossa forms and Pell Grant forms and all that. And one thing we found out that, you know, some of these kids, you know, maybe they're living with their grandparents or something, and those forms were just like foreign, you know, to them. So, you know, they've got a group of people now that'll help them fill those forms out, and a lot of them, a lot of them, we don't even, we don't fund it, you know, they fund through that, so it's, it's turned out to be just a wonderful program. Outside of that, um, I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser, thank you, sir. I've got a couple of things here, uh, before we adjourn. I need to get ahold of Mr. Hensley again. We were together the other day, and I, I would much rather, uh, me and Andrew Hensley's working on a project, to help the agriculture industry. We'll be able to tell you a little bit more about it. As we move forward, we had a very positive meeting there the other day with Stephen Verson with the Tobacco Commission. We've got some people taking the lead on it, uh, that farmers that have springs on their farms, will have the ability to, to raise fish and be able to get paid. It, this will actually help, uh, with a lot of young people to want, to be encouraged to want to keep the farm. I know Mr. Larry Hughes was there at the meeting, and, and different ones were there at the meeting to look at this opportunity. I, I've been working on this thing four or five years, and just as soon as I mentioned it to Andrew, which he's into agriculture, farming, logging and all that, I told Andrew, I said, this would be a great project. So, Andrew, do you want to say anything anymore about that?
I just appreciate the Tobacco Commission meeting with us and, uh, listening to what we had to say, and we've got some super intelligent folks in the county that, uh, not outside of myself, that know, that, that know more about fish than I do, I know how to eat them. But, uh, they're, they're working on this and, and hopefully we'll, we'll figure, figure out how to get some fish raised in Russell County.
Also, I've got a meeting set up for this Thursday, Andrew, I will call you on your phone, I've got to get to date. I've got a COO coming in from an industry that wants to, they're, they're interested in purchasing Copper Creek School. So, I'll, I hadn't, reason I hadn't called you yet, because I don't have the, the time. I got the, I got the date, it's Thursday, but I know how our schedules are, and I've tried to express to him. He said he's flying in and he will let us know. So, I want to let you know that we do have somebody that's looking at Copper Creek School. Y'all say a prayer about that, hopefully we can, we can land that deal.
I'd, I'd had a, somebody else had reached out about a potential with Copper Creek as well, and, and I, I left it at, if you're interested, you need to speak up, so we'll, we'll see how that goes as well.
Well, thank you, thank you, Andrew. If we don't have anything else or any other pending thing, huh, we need to make a motion to reconvene on the twenty-fourth at six.
Motion?
Got a motion in four seconds, I believe. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you all so much, you know, everybody have a blessed evening.